All right.
Yeah, I have to get my chocolate down here first. Physical.
Steve, Steve was jealous.
Halloween.
You're just a rascal.
You steal. You steal candy from your grandkids there?
How bad he does.
He's not denying it.
Yeah, I know.
And we're back.
Nothing.
We are back in action here as county board. We're up to Phil Schmalz, Public Works Director.
Good morning. Uh, one item for you this morning to consider, um, approving us to recruit a hybrid position, an engineering tech slash heavy equipment operator. Um, just a little bit of history on this position. We have two engineering technician type positions in our department. They're mainly responsible for construction, inspection, surveying, um, bridge inspections, field work. Of those two, one of them retired in March and we've been unable to fill the position. Um, basically not getting applicants that meet or come close to our requirements. Had some questions on the position, but nothing really to pursue. So we came up with this idea to try and train somebody into the position, um, a hybrid position where we could evolve someone into a quality technician over time. So that's what we're looking for.
So have you combined two or just made a new?
We turned a technician position into a hybrid was what we did.
Do you anticipate having some success recruiting with this particular combo?
I think so, just because the qualifications are a little more broad. We're no longer requiring the education and the experience of a technician.
Okay.
We're requiring so, um, varying levels of experience.
So who's the teacher then?
We are, um, fellow technicians, myself, the assistant engineer.
Then we did, um, the, the sconce, the, that's in your packet here, the concept, where you went through class and comp with this.
They must have three too then, personnel, right?
Did, oh, you guys.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say that this was a situation where I want to commend Phil on that. We've had a, a real difficulty for nine months now trying to fill this position. And so the creativity in doing this to come, come up with a way that we can address a couple of needs at the same time. I, I think is a new way which we need to deal with recruitment challenges.
Yeah.
I, I think this is a really good idea.
And it should also give folks that are working there, say, hey, you know, maybe down the road, this is something if it comes open again, I can apply for. So we get that upward mobility type aspect out of it too.
And I'd like to see it kind of work both ways, like you are indicating long term. If we're able to internally train somebody up into being a fully capable technician, they can fall in line with the engineering side and have the same opportunities any technician would have. So the position may evolve in the future if we're able to get started with somebody.
I like the idea too. I thought it was a really good idea. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the recruitment of engineering technician, heavy equipment operator, hybrid position to the public and public works and authorize the department to solicit the employment candidates to fill the position.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredeis. Any further discussion or questions for Phil? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
It's a good idea, Phil. It's the kind of government I can handle.
It's the old ways.
OJT.
Yep.
A lot of good job training.
I'm feeling sour.
Next slide.
Feeling sour though.
I figured as she was up next, that's why we needed the break, cause probably take the rest of the morning.
This is a.
Geez you guys, I thought this was a really good segue.
This is kind of a, this is kind of a hybrid situation too.
I would like to point out, we have a hard out at noon. So if you guys think we can get this done in an hour and forty minutes, we could always push it to the next meeting.
Well, no, I think this was a great segue to what I'm asking for approval here. I'm asking for the approval of the recruitment of a full-time paralegal position. As you guys may recall, I did have this come through the budget process. It didn't go the, through the personnel committee because we brought it through the full board as part of, um, budget. This needs to go through the class and comp committee yet and to determine the exact rating. However, the rating shouldn't be difficult because Wright County, Stearns County, Candy White County all have paralegals in their office. Uh, when I was working as a public defender, which I don't have to talk about, but up in Stearns and in Crow Wing County, they had a paralegal in both of those offices. And the benefit of a paralegal, it's a hybrid of an attorney and a legal assistant. It takes it one step above a legal assistant and one step below an attorney. They do research, case law. They spend a lot of their time at their computer drafting, um, arguments. It'll relieve a lot of the duties that the attorneys are currently doing of having to sit and write briefs and memorandums. Also, they're going to help with scheduling for trials. They will help eliminate some of the attorney time that it takes for an attorney to have to put together a trial notebook, have to make sure witnesses are subpoenaed, scheduling those witnesses. Currently, right now, it is a hybrid between the crime victim advocate doing that as well as one of the attorney, the attorney going to trial. In our office, we've been having some, um, staffing struggles, which is not uncommon throughout the state of Minnesota at this point. So there's nothing more that we could really offer at this time to help, um, applicants besides what the county is already doing. And so when I came to the, um, budget time, it was kind of brought up of have you ever thought of a paralegal? And I did about six years ago, but then I got an attorney instead. And so I haven't thought about it again. However, we have not been able to hire for the crime or for the, um, contract attorney position that we talked about back in December. So that position has been vacant. Um, the posting's been out there. I think we pulled it in September when I made the budget request and we kind of went through, um, and had the preliminary approval of, uh, the full-time paralegal. So that this year, there are the ARP funds would, or next year, when, if approved, we would be using ARP funds. Since this is a lower level, um, the, the cost won't be as high. There will be additional ARP funds that will be available to the county next year that we will not be using. Um, so this is kind of addressing a staffing solution. We have that vacancy from, well, we have the vacancy for that contract position since December. So that's about nine months. We've had two or three apply for that position, but we were ghosted on all interviews that we set up. And so no one has literally come in and done an interview for that attorney position, which is, um, very frustrating. The second issue, we had a vacancy for our full-time attorney position. They gave us a gracious six weeks notice to post so that we could try to hire before I went on leave for, um, maternity leave. However, we were unable to even, um, have any interviews during that time. So it had been open until from May to October, October. So that is six months. We just finally filled it. We had two interviews and I will tell you that neither of them are licensed in Minnesota. So right now we are training, since we have to do the onboarding process anyways. We hired an attorney. She's, um, doing excellent work. She's almost acting like a paralegal right now because she's not appearing in court since she's not licensed. We're hoping she gets licensed here in December. No pressure, but, um, so, so we don't even have five full-time attorneys practicing, um, in the courtroom right now. So this is trying to come up with a creative solution. We had a resignation for the crime victim advocate. She was with us for four years. And with that, I was hoping to be able to onboard since their positions are very similar in how they're going to be dealing with witnesses and maybe victims. I was hoping to be able to try to onboard at the same time. Hence why I'm bringing this now rather than waiting until January so that we can have them flow through and our new attorney to be able to kind of onboard at the same time to save some, um, resources. I expect I will have another resignation, maybe within the next year from one of our attorneys. So I'll be going through this process again. The piece that you have to keep in mind is that the trials are getting more technical. They're more difficult. They're taking longer. And so the trial prep is really where, and sometimes they're resolving before trial. So the trial prep is what is, um, making resolutions because defendants are realizing, you know, oh man, this is what the state's ready for. These are the motions that they're winning. So the trial prep is the most crucial part. Yes, we want excellent attorneys in trial, but it's that trial prep that we really could use the additional support on. So I am here asking for the approval of that recruitment for a full-time paralegal position with the caveat that this come before class and comp, which I'm hoping we could schedule a meeting tomorrow for. Any questions?
You said you pulled one position off of the market.
Yes.
Is that coming back on to?
No, this is to replace that.
We had, we had authorized a one-year contract.
With ARP dollars?
With ARP dollars. So that's the one that was pulled.
Was pulled and this was created to take that place. Will this individual? Okay.
And moving forward.
Will this individual work with, you say there are five attorneys?
Correct.
This person be able to help accommodate the workload of all five of those folks?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, County Attorney Shifelby, I'm not against this. That's not why I'm asking this question. But if you have turnover in that, do you believe that this will be an easier recruitment than?
Yes.
You're only six months down the road, you lose that person, you're not going to have to wait two years to rehire? You'd be able to find another replacement fairly?
I do believe so because you're going to have these, uh, paralegals in, um, the same offices that the attorneys are all in. So they're in private offices, they're in public defender's office, they're in state offices. So these paralegals, and when I was a public defender in Stearns County, they actually had an attorney who only wanted the eight to four thirty hours. And so they had an attorney come in and was working as their paralegal. So they were being paid less, but they got a little bit better hours. And so those are options as well.
So this is a brand new full-time position?
Correct.
And it did not go through the personnel committee? Would, would therein be a benefit to have it going through the personnel committee first? Is there a requirement to do anything like that or?
Commissioner Bredeis, the, the purpose in which that the, the process that we use as part of the budget where we evaluate the new positions initially has to go through the personnel committee. And the reason for that is we want to be able to give department heads an answer upfront of is this a position that we want to consider as part of the budget and then we want to evaluate it as part of the budget as a whole. This position came up differently because we were trying to solve an existing problem that existed. So it came up through a brainstorming session at the budget meeting. So it was beyond that initial process. We then had a discussion with the full county board as part of the budget meeting, um, to, uh, about this position. And so that's where I felt it, it didn't seem necessary to come back and have yet another discussion with the personnel committee because you all had an opportunity during that budget meeting to talk about this position and the, and the merits of it.
Listen, it's similar. You're basically creating a similar situation to Phil's. It's a, you're creating a hybrid to help try and bridge some gaps and hopefully make your current attorneys more efficient, create some efficiency and workflow and hopefully make it easier to fill future attorney positions, knowing they have support staff around.
Yes, that's completely accurate. And ideally the preference would be to have a contract attorney to be able to come in and do trials. However, we're not able to get that. And with the market that we're in, that's not, um, feasible. And I think going forward, this is a long-term solution. Candy White County has had their paralegal for twenty-four years in their office. So I'm, I'm hoping maybe we can find longevity in this kind of career.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the recruitment of a full-time paralegal in the county attorney's office.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredeis. Any further discussion? I have a question. The, the pace scale here that's, is going to be, um, discretionary.
It's going to be confirmed by the, the class and comp. As we have.
Okay. Okay. Um, that was my only question.
And the twenty twenty-three salary will be covered by ARP?
Correct. Yes.
And, and addition.
Yeah, if you recall, there was ninety-two thousand dollars that was allocated towards the contract attorney position. What we'll do is we'll expend that full ninety-two thousand dollars and then we'll move on to the regular.
You good? All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up. County logo. All right. Then an exciting venture.
So, so as, as you all know, but for the, the purpose of the public, we've been going through a process of refreshing our website, which provides us with an opportunity to update our county logo. Um, we've been working through a number of alternative options. Um, a couple of months ago, we came to the county board in work session to, uh, get feedback on options that were, uh, developed. Um, we then did a, a survey of staff to get their feedback. We took that information, took the two highest vote getters that came out of that along with a variety of comments, made some further adjustments, presented, uh, those two options to the county board last week at the work session. Got some further comments and now we come to you with what is the final option, which is what you now see on the screen in front of you. Um, the, the purpose of the logo is to, you know, show and share some of the identity of the county. Uh, and to, it'll be, um, a design that we use in our, our branding throughout. Um, so we're going to use on letterhead, envelope, signage, other areas where identification, um, of the county is important. Uh, and over time, we're going to transition those materials out. A lot of the things that are electronic and easy to do, we're going to do right away. Other things we're going to, you know, replace as necessary so as not to, uh, incur unnecessary cost. With that, looking for a motion to approve the new logo.
Just one question. Does it have to be packer green?
Oh, that's not even close to pack.
It's more bang, god.
We don't want to beat him up right now.
Kick a man on his down.
I have to say, I like the flourish was Steve that.
Well, I like the block.
Flourish?
Well, it just looked bland. I don't know how we got the flourish or swoosh or whatever we were talking about.
I so moved to approve the new county logo.
Look at that. You were, you were a fish person.
I was the fish, the fish lady here, but I've gone with the, the wheat. I like it.
We can call it Bredeis and rye.
And maybe that a rye comment there, Mr.?
All right. And, uh, so we got a motion by Commissioner Bredeis.
I don't want to approve it just because I want to hold it off for a little bit because of what you said before. You said it had to last a year. It's like you gotta done it a month. I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Chief.
Two weeks and thirty seconds, right?
I like the, the colony too and the block lettering, I think. It, it looks, I like, it looks good and so. That's my only comment. Any further discussion on the logo? I hope not. Been kind of a journey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So that's not alfalfa?
No, no. Rye's a stretch.
It's not even good weed.
No, I know. You know what? I'm having seconds.
Um, I just also wanted to, uh, to note that Laura Beach and our IT department did a lot of work on putting together these different options.
Will you? Thanks.
Her design and, you know, absolutely. Thank you, Laura. Fantastic.
Yep. It's beautiful.
I'm sure she appreciated everybody's input. Multiple times.
I'm not saying she threatened to quit, but she did. That she used to have a good life before I came.
What the heck is a flourish? Yeah.
Um.
That which moves us up to our, uh, county administrators' report.
So a couple of items for you today. First and foremost, I want to bring attention to the fact that, uh, next week, uh, on Friday is Veterans Day and the county offices are going to be closed. Also in recognition of Veterans Day, the county is going to be participating in NACO's Operation Greenlight, where we are going to, uh, light up the courthouse and the family services building in green to bring attention to veterans' needs.
Neat.
This is a, a national program that, that NACO is pushing this year and that AMC has, um, you know, signed off on and is supporting and.
I was wondering, I saw that and I was wondering if we're.
We certainly are. We certainly are.
Well, that was free lighting too, wasn't it? They didn't charge us for any of the lighting.
No, we have to purchase.
Yeah.
It would be packer green, wouldn't it?
Highly reduced rate though, wasn't it?
Um, we're, I, yes, it's, I believe it's a reduced price, but it's a film that goes on the, the lights, so.
I can't get it off, but you can put it on.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can.
Christmas is, Christmas is coming right around.
You don't want to be one of those people who have it on until.
Every packers win, which this year is not that many, so. Um, and then also as a reminder, um, this Thursday, uh, we have all been invited to participate in the Prime West meeting. The materials, uh, for that have been emailed to you along with the link if you wish to participate virtually. That is all I have.
Everything's coming along with the remodeling, nothing new.
What are we doing on the third?
Yeah, so on that we've been, um, periodically meeting with departments to go over, you know, iterations of the designs, uh, that the architects have come up with. We actually have another set of meetings on Thursday. I'm sorry, on Tuesday next week on the family services building.
Oh, okay.
We're seeing good progress there.
All right. So that moves us into, we'll start with old number four.
All right.
Commissioner.
There's a number two. That's something that has nothing to do with you, Julie.
Oh, no, no, no. You don't want to, I think I know where he was going with that. You don't want to.
Um, yeah, since I was out of town, we're doing negotiations now, uh, starting yesterday. I didn't have anything else and we continue them today and tomorrow. So that's just a prelim, so nothing, nothing meaty yet.
Kind of trading some information right now with the unions. We had four yesterday.
Yep, four yesterday, two today, two tomorrow.
You guys are on that.
Yep. So right now they're just outlining it and we're outlining it. So nothing, nothing bloody yet. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, number four.
Usually it's number nine.
Oh, you're moving up.
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Bredeis.
Oh, I thought you were going to say now number two.
Now, well, okay, here we go. Well, on the eighteenth, we had our regular meeting and delicious treats were shared. Our birthday girl, me, okay. Then on that Thursday, we, uh, I had the Pioneer Land Library meeting in Wilmer and we experienced a little sticker shock, uh, going through their health insurance. They have a peep package, forty-nine percent increase. I about fell off my chair. This Mr. Bill Chukuski, I don't know if that's his, he spoke with us too. He's kind of our insurance person. We had asked him to look into any options for the Pioneer Land folks. He only received one other bid and that was from Blue Cross and that would be a thirty-nine percent jump. So a subcommittee of members from Pioneer Land was formed to deal with this issue and they will be reporting back very soon because this has to be completed by the end of November. Then I received, uh, an envelope from our other Meeker County representative to the Pioneer Land Library Board. And she said, dear county commissioners, I hereby submit my resignation from the Pioneer Land and the executive finance board effective December thirty-first of this year. Marla S. Bier. And I was sad to have Marla decide that, uh, she was going to step away from service. She has been a wonderful representative for Meeker County on this board. I thank her for serving diligently and faithfully. But now I ask my fellow board members, please, um, contemplate folks from your areas. We need to fill this position and have them, they can contact me for more information. We, we need to find someone and, uh, but I want to thank Marla for her service. Then on Monday, the twenty-fourth, was the District Five Association of Minnesota Counties. The AMC was held here in our courthouse basement. We were asked to vote on our top, um, five priorities or issues for legislative concern that AMC will then present for twenty twenty-three. Business was taken care of there. On Tuesday, then the twenty-fifth, we had our work session. And I would have to say that the logo with the Steve flourish was a very nice choice and we just addressed that. I sit on three boards that are looking for folks to help serve. Uh, the University of Minnesota Extension Board, our local public health board and the Pioneer Land Library Board. So please, if you know of folks, send them my way, uh, ask them to serve because we definitely need people on all three of those committees. And here we are today and in the paper, yesterday's paper, it was mentioned that there's going to be an open forum. It's scheduled for Thursday now, November third, at the Opera House here in town for, um, Beth, our, our partner, Steve, you're invited to that and any other candidates, the mayoral race and the different wards, et cetera. So that is now going to be at seven o'clock, Thursday evening at the Opera House. There we go.
Are, are you coming to ask questions?
I may.
I just want to be prepared.
I'll be kind. I will be.
Do you have a laser pointer to?
No, I have one of those too.
People's eyes and stuff.
It's a little red one.
Thank you, Julie. Paul?
Um, well, I attended my first MAP meeting, which is Meeker Area Partners in Prevention, um, last week after our commissioner meeting. Uh, I think, you know, the definition there, the goal is to have a community where youth live free of substance abuse. And one of the things, if you look on their Facebook page, they have a, a thing there that in nineteen twenty, or in two thousand twenty-one, thirty-two percent of twelfth graders use illicit drugs.
One-third.
Or have at least experienced it. Nineteen percent of tenth graders and ten percent of eighth graders. You know, you start looking at those things, yeah, we got to do whatever we can to prevent it happening or they end up with Brandy having to take them to court because they have acted in a way. But it looks like a good group. It was my first meeting, so, you know, I just kind of was an observer, but it looks like it's an active group and, uh, I think that it has some positive, could have some positive outcomes. Um, then we had a CPT meeting, uh, while the AMC meeting was going on. So I'm just going to go from a couple of the notes, uh, off the, um, draft minutes. Um, they voted not to, uh, have paybacks to the counties this year. So there will be no capital, uh, coming back to the counties. They also made the decision to have the county, or the, uh, CPT pay the per diems for the meetings and the mileage. Now, that doesn't sound like much, but if I attend twelve meetings, it's roughly twenty-four hundred dollars, including the executive board meetings that won't be coming out of our county anymore. It will be paid by CPT. And in my opinion, that's where those charges belong. It's a, it's a cost of operating CPT, so, um, they have recommended a two-point-five COLA increase for wages in twenty twenty-three, which seems to be kind of what we're hearing around. So, um, kind of an interesting discussion. I wish I would have been there for it. Um, but they had a discussion about changing the hybrid work model to include staff in office an average of two days per week instead of the one required now. So, uh, I'm quite sure that was probably a pretty lively conversation. But they, they did pass the motion, uh, to require the two days instead of just one, so. Um, then the, the AMC meeting, of course, that we were all at, uh, the thing, when the counties all gave their report, the one resounding thing came through every single county. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was problems with hiring. We, we talked about Phil's position today, problem hiring there. That seemed to be one of the messages that just resonated with every single county was their difficulty in hiring. But it's always nice to visit all of them. Uh, I sat next to one of the commissioners, the retiring commissioner from Wright County. I tried to sell her our landfill, but she wasn't buying. It was worth a try, you know? That is it for me.
Hughes, Hughesman, uh, what's, uh, what's her name? Uh, Commissioner Hughesman?
Not Hughesman. Starts with an H, but it's not Hughesman. We used to have Commissioner Hughesman.
No, it was Hollisman, but it's, it's.
Yeah, and I also, in, in visiting with Mary from Wright County, she has to run again because of redistricting. Well, her husband shattered his arm. It's got twenty-six screws in it and three plates and so forth. And she said, yeah, I don't have anybody to pound in my big signs this year because my husband did that.
There you go.
So she said, I have to use all small ones because I can step them into the yard. So, but it does sound like there's a lot of opposed commissioners running this year. It does sound like there's a lot of opposed commissioners running this year uh that due to redistricting or what, or just plain term.
Yeah, there's a lot of redistricting, so that.
But they are opposed, they're not running unopposed, so, a lot of challengers out there.
All right, all right, thanks, Paul. I did have a uh couple things on the after I had the MAP meeting with Paul, after uh last Tuesdays, or two Tuesdays ago, uh regular board meeting, and Angie is stepping down from running, or she she moved on to other employment, so she was running those meetings, so we do have.
I mean, Bree?
Brianna, Bree, it's Bree.
Brianna.
Brianna, what's that? Uh, okay, she's gonna be taking that over and helping out with that. Um, I also had a meeting with Grove City with the um superintendent at Grove City, and and there's nine candidates running for four positions at the at the uh s- school board in Grove City and A C G C, and they had a meeting with the Lions Club and the super, new superintendent, and we talked about S R O position and and creating some sort of consultation there to have that further discussed as we move and figure out some sort of funding agreement on that. Um, that's right, and moving into that, I, uh, Eden Valley has with their position now that seems to be it's been talked about some more, just in the last recent week or two, and it sounds like they're very happy with their position with Evan Borscheid, who is hired up there as the chief in the K nine, and and gonna, they are gonna hire another full-time position. What will be the first time they've had a full-time position, two full-time uh officers in Eden Valley, so they are gonna handle the S R O uh position there internally or locally with the local P D up there. Uh, other than, then I had a Vets Council meeting on the twentieth, um, Vets Council, um, another really good program there. They continue to serve the local veterans very well. Um, they do have a next county van uh ordered, but like everything else, they're in wait. It'll be a little while before they get the one replaced of the two. So that's one of the bigger items they got that they're waiting on there. A M C on the twenty-fourth, um, couple different things on that. Andrew, the fifty thousand, I was gonna mention that, what exactly was that?
That is.
Coming from?
That's coming from the the Federal American Rescue Plan, um, Act, and it's for counties with public lands. So, we need to file our application for that, and we'll get fifty thousand dollars a year this year and next year.
A two-year, two payments of fifty thousand dollars a year.
Of which we can use for whatever.
We can use for general governmental purposes, we cannot use it to lobby, that's right, that's right.
And then we
Fill out the form.
And we did, did vote on our top items for legislative support through A M C. Number one was comprehensive property tax relief. Number two was uh the community supervision funding model, which is that one work group that I sit on. And number three was uh uh to promote our developmental health and developmental disabilities uh continuum of care. So those are kind of the top three priorities of A M C moving into this next legislative year um for District Five, they'll they'll, they all vote, and there's ten different district meetings, or nine, I believe, or ten, and they will all vote, and then the results will be tallied and move up from there, but that was District Five, which is eleven counties in District Five. And then I also had the uh Rural Twenty-nine Eleven Advisory Committee meeting, and that is the one where we're talking about um uh basically uh inmates and how they're checked on, how they're monitored. Kind of an interesting work group, there's um on there, we also, we have uh two family members, a parent, mother, and a father who have had inmates that died in in county jails, and so expectedly, there's some emotion in the conversations, and um and it's it's uh interesting, the one, the concern obviously that it, that I have is some of the expectations I think that we're putting on our jailers is gonna be already is unreasonable, and I think that that I'm concerned that through this rural draft process, we are gonna see some of them rules increase, and it it becomes to the point where our jailers gonna need to have a P H D to evaluate these people, um, these inmates and and screen them, and and who is, once they've been screened, you know, if they come in intoxicated, high, or or, you know, are they capable of being screened at that time properly? And and where is the cutoff between properly screening and not properly? You know, I mean, there's a million different factors that weigh into this, and trying to develop a a standard rule is is uh very difficult, and then putting that on the back of a jailer is um more complicated and 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 is it even feasible? So I mean, there's more to come on that, we'll have, I think, three or four more meetings yet on that. And then these are rules, so they will be approved by a judge, um, and reviewed, reviewed by a judge and approved. Um, uh, the governor uh does not need to approve them, but he can veto them. Um, they will not go before alleged, they will not be law, but they will be rules. So this is being put on by the Department of Corrections, so, more to come on that. And other than that, union negotiations, we already touched on that, four yesterday, two today, two tomorrow. And and we're off and running on that. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Is anyone going to Alex on Thursday?
For Prime West?
Cause there was two options, you can do, you can do the Zoom or you can go in person, I just was wondering if anybody was going.
I, I'm not going.
Uh, Jim sent out some really, really good information, I mean, I I thought it was excellent.
Three emails with lots of information about this.
Three PDFs attached to one, and then there was another PDF on the other one. It's it's good information, really good.
Um, I will, I should mention too, Julie, a caution mark for me there too, but um it's on the third, um, November third, Julie Ring from A M C, we have a webinar or Webex meeting um discussing M R C, and then they have a new executive director um candidate, so they're gonna present some of that to us, and it'll be interesting to see.
I thought the thought train was to maybe seize this opportunity with the vacancy.
Uh, well, uh, that's still an opportunity, I think we don't make a payment until February, so I mean, we're paid through the end of the year, put it that way, but um it'll be interesting to see what what type of uh candidate and how they're, I think it's gonna be a contract, the way it's sound. They also won't be a full-time position, the way I'm, if I'm reading everything right.
Cause I always thought that maybe the golden opportunity would make that a part of A M C.
That's probably a good way of putting a golden opportunity, I don't know. I d- I don't know what the feel of the, or, you know, you got twenty-three counties, I believe, in there, so I mean, I'm not sure what the feeling is on all of it, but uh, I know what, the way I'm leaning right now, it'll just, I'm gonna kind of let the process play out and see if it changes any direction, I'm not really anticipating that, but um, I'm just, I'll, more to come, I guess.
Now, I have dates down, the Prime West is this Thursday, the third.
Oh, I'm.
And then
Seventh.
Monday, the seventh, from nine to ten, is a Zoom option for the M R C A S, A M C. That would be on Monday.
And you're eligible, the delegate, to join in that.
I'm contemplating that nine to ten Zoom.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much information, just informative stuff, so. And that's all I've got.
Just a reminder, Danny, November fourteenth at ten o'clock.
Writing it down.
The fourteenth?
All right, um, what's that, nothing further to come before the board? All adjourned in the board meeting. Thank you.
Jim is inviting department heads to the, Jim Presbala, to the Prime West.